Looks like I got.
She just wore shorts on the bottom.
Right, as well.
Is it flooding down there?
I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 26th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no additions to the agenda.
Thank you. If there is any input from the audience on items that are not on tonight's agenda, you may come to the podium stating your name and address for the record at this time, and we do ask the audience to keep their comments to three minutes if they wish to address the public or the Planning Commission this evening. Seeing then, we will move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the August 22nd, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing then, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been motioned by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I am going to skip over old business, as we have no old business this evening. Okay. And we will move into a public hearing section. We have two items that will have public hearings on this evening. The first is a request by Maplewood Development for approval of the Amberfields 13th Edition Preliminary Platte, and I will turn that over to Julia.
All right, so this item tonight is a preliminary plat for Amberfields 13th Edition, so a little bit of a summary for the requests. So the Planning Commission is being asked to consider requests by Maplewood Development for approval of a preliminary plat for Amberfields 13th Edition to create 65 single-family residential lots. So a little bit of the site location, so you can see that the site is outlined in red. It is located on the southeastern portion of the overall Amberfields development, located directly west of Akron Avenue, and also north of 154th down there. All right, a little bit of overall site plan. So gross area of the site is 14.68 acres, and the density is 4.43 units per acre. Like I had mentioned, 65 single-family lots are requested for this site. So you can also see that there are, there's two roadways throughout the site. The looped road B that will go off of the proposed road A that will come off of Akron Avenue from the west, and then there also will be a road C that will interconnect the looped road. Also proposed for this area is a trail connection in between Lot 20 and Lot 19 in Block 1 that will connect to that central greenway area, and that will be part of Phase 2. So here's the phasing plan for the site. So the first phase of the subdivision will consist of the 37 of the proposed single-family lots, part of the interior roadways of C and B, and then also Road A off of Akron Avenue that will interconnect throughout the development. And then the second phase will consist of the remaining 28 single-family lots and the remaining interior roadway and trail extension as well. So some lot standards, so that table that's shown right there, you can see that what dimensions were approved with the Amberfields PUD, and then also what is being proposed for the 13th Edition. So the applicant is also requesting a minor amendment to the PUD to reduce the minimum lot width and reduce the minimum lot area square footage. So the corner lots within the subdivision do meet those minimum requirements that were approved in the Amberfields PUD, but there are a few interior lots that do not meet that minimum 5,400 and 45 feet width. So the landscape plan, so 88 trees are to be provided throughout the site, and then a landscape surety in the amount of $29,040 is required as a condition of approval. The landscape plan does meet the requirements. And then here is showing the preliminary plat of the site, just showing the roadways and also the 65 lots presented for the site. And then a couple elevations that were sent over from the applicant. So here are a few that are proposed for the houses throughout the addition. Then here are a couple more. And then here is some looking out from the roadway onto the potential homes throughout the subdivision as well. So recommended action, so a motion to recommend the City Council approve the preliminary plat for Amberfields 13th Edition, subject to conditions A through E. Then I will take any questions from the Commission.
Are there any questions at this time for Julia? Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of questions. One, this minor amendment that they're asking us to approve, so as I understand it, the, the, some of the interior lots don't meet the minimum lot requirement because they're, it's a smaller, it's a less of a lot area, and so they're asking for a smaller lot area than what is typically required?
Yes, correct. Yes, and, sorry.
No, keep going.
And this isn't the first time we've seen this for an addition throughout the Amberfields development. Amberfields Edition, 5th Edition, which was David Weekly Homes, we did allow for a minor amendment to allow for decrease in lot area square footage and as well as lot width as well. This is not to that extent. That minor amendment was only for that addition, so that's why they have to come forward again for a minor amendment to allow for it for this addition.
What's the, is there, the minor amendments capitalized, is that a, is that a defined term in our zoning code? And, and is there some kind of legal framework or parameters that we have to look at in order to approve a minor amendment?
Yeah, so there's minor amendments and major amendments. That is at the discretion of the Community Development Director and how we see the request being either a minor or a major. Like I had mentioned, since we did do that as a minor amendment for the 5th Edition, we did see this being relevant to be a minor amendment for this addition as well.
But for us approving it, is there, I mean, is it just our discretion to approve it or not, or is it a minor amendment that changes a PUD, can only be approved if blah, blah, blah? You know what? I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of framework we're supposed to be looking at?
Well, a minor amendment is only, only goes forward in front of the City Council, so there will be that in front of, for them. A major amendment does go in front of the Planning Commission as well. That's why it is a condition within this approval that a minor amendment would be have to be approved by the City Council, so.
Commissioner Whitman, there are some standards that the Community Development Director should consider when determining if an amendment request is major or minor. One example is if it changes the number of stories, if it's a commercial or other type of a development, or if it increases the number of residential units by greater than 5%, that would be a threshold that would lead to a major amendment. But simply changing the, the minimum lot area, one of those did not fall to the level, or rise to the level, so to speak, of a major amendment requiring a public hearing for that specific request.
Okay. And then, I guess my, that, thank you both. The, so this PUD has been established, it has these requirements, staff has determined it's a minor, or the, the director has determined it's a minor amendment. Does, is the director also considering whether, I, I wasn't here when the PUD was approved, so I don't know, but are there like environmental concerns and that sort of thing that, not concerns, but issues that need to be addressed and resolved before approving that level of a zoning approval? Does it change, does a minor amendment just by itself not change those, you know, like having a smaller lot area, does that affect any, any of the findings that were made when the PUD was approved?
No, so like for instance, so for smaller lot wise, we do have, you know, our interdepartmental meetings with everyone, so if engineering did have, if the engineering department did have concerns regarding, you know, runoff from smaller lots or anything like that, they would let us know in their reports that they do for preliminary plats. There was no concerns in regards to that from them. That was, their memo was attached within the, within the attachments. Also, again, with the original PUD, everything was looked over, engineering had comments within that. I don't know if Anthony wants to add any additions to that.
Well, I think the biggest thing is that the request for that deviation or change to the deviation standard doesn't really change the development patterns on the site. It's simply the, the request for that smaller lot, when it was approved prior, was only limited to that specific preliminary plat area versus the entire planned unit development area, I guess.
Okay.
Am I fully clear on where, where you're going with, with it?
Well, I just, I, is there ever a reason not to approve a minor amendment? It sounds like just like, not even a big deal, like why are we even approving it or not?
Well, the main thing we look at for these ones is that that minor amendment resolution is approved so that when building permits do come forward, that we can approve what comes in front of us. Like for instance, with the Amberfields 5th Edition, we allow for those smaller lots on that one in regards to that, but there's other, like Amberfields 2nd Edition has larger parameters, they fall under the Amberfields PUD regulations, so a lot of it comes forward when the building permits come forward for those houses, and it's what the Building Department and Planning looks at when approving those as well.
Okay.
Julia, I think, I don't know if I had my count right, but I think it's like seven lots that this applies to?
Yeah, it's not many. All the corner lots meet the minimum requirements. There's a couple within the interior that don't meet that parameter and are at that 5,200 square feet in area size.
Okay. I mean, to me, it would be more concerning if they were asking for a, a variance to drop it drastically to fit a lot more lots in there or something, and if every lot was going to, you know, 5,200 or 5,250 and, and such, but you know, it's less, it's about 10% of their total lots that fall into it. So, you know, I think it makes sense, I just, I want to be careful that like this is the second one we've done, so, you know, we don't want to create a, I don't know if it's going to, if we're going to have a lot of these and to what degree as they continue to, to build out Amberfield, if there's, if every development that comes forward is going to, or every addition is going to need to go down and how many lots and, and such. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So the alternative, I guess what I'm looking at is, we keep the same amount of lots at the same amount of footage, and then just have more green space versus having more housing space? Is that the alternative?
I mean, they'd have to probably come back with a different design or different preliminary.
Oh, I'm not proposing it, I'm just saying that that's typically, if you're asking for less footage for certain lots, then you're getting more houses in a smaller area.
Ultimately, and we saw that same with, you know, Amberfields 4th and 5th Editions and many other additions within Amberfields, we are seeing that smaller footprint, but that is something that the market is seeing, those smaller footprints, and that's why these developers are coming forward and asking for these smaller ones, so.
One.
Yep, go ahead.
One more question. Turning to the trees, the preservation and landscaping section, just for my clarification, it looks like there's two paragraphs here. The second one deals with a total of 88 trees will be planted, and that's what you have on this slide here as well. There's a landscaping surety that's required, but that first paragraph is talking about certain amount of caliper inches of trees, and it states, "Staff is confident this will be met as development continues." Are you stating that you're confident that, is, are these two separate things we're talking about here, or are you confident that the 88 trees will be planted?
No, the 88 trees need to be, are required to be planted. The caliper inches is more so from what the trees that were, had to be taken down with the development, that has to be made up.
Okay, so that's separate.
Throughout, that is separate, yes.
Why, what's the basis for your confidence in that?
There's a large green space proposed within this development, the central greenway, and it has to be made up. That's a requirement of the original Amberfields PUD that was approved back in '21, that was a requirement that they have to meet those makeup and caliper inches, so the main developer is aware of this, and staff's confident that they'd be able to make up those inches throughout the different.
Able with the space that's provided there, you're confident that there's room for those trees to go in?
Yes.
It can be met, but you're not stating you're confident they're going to do it?
They're required to do it.
Right.
Yes.
But here, you have a surety for planting 88 trees, that builds some confidence to me, but to not have any kind of surety and just state that you're confident it will be met without it having been met, I guess I don't know why, why are we, why is staff confident about that?
Commissioner, it's more that the, the confidence that there's enough room for them to make up for the tree replacement that they're required to plant within that open green space. At that time, when we see what the planting schedule and landscape plan is for that open green space, we'll be collecting a surety for those trees in addition to the 88 that are required as part of this, which is just the standard, you know, one per interior lot, two per corner lots, and then any additional ones on the boulevard, for example, on that southernmost street are in addition to what the code requires. So those will count towards the replacements that are required within the overall master development plan. So when, when we give the landscaping plan for that central park and green, air, green space area, that's where we'll calculate the surety for those trees themselves.
Okay.
So the confidence is that there's enough space for them to fit all of the replacement trees that are, they'll be required to plant, but just on a lot-by-lot basis, it's been hard to do because we're only looking at these, you know, basically blocks of, of homes.
Okay, okay.
And so a surety is collected on those once it's deemed where those additional caliper inch.
Right.
Because they're going to be replaced.
Yes.
And then the landscape surety is.
Right.
Is taken, okay.
Then you're really confident. For a year. All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from the Commission on this item? Thank you, Julia. At this time, we will open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item may do so at this time, coming to the podium stating your name and address for the record. Seeing then, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been motioned by Commissioner Kinniger and seconded by Commissioner Haber to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. And at this time, we could entertain a motion on this item before us.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll try to make a motion here. I think this is my first motion I've made since I've been a planning commissioner. I move to recommend that the City Council approve the preliminary plat for Amberfields 13th Edition, subject to the conditions as stated in the recommended action A through E.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Whitman and seconded by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes the first item on our public hearing agenda for this evening. The next item on our public hearing agenda is a request by Almedina Association for a site plan review, and I will turn that over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This may be a familiar site for some of you on the Commission. The applicant did apply for a conditional use permit for a place of worship on this site, which is located kind of in the north, northern portion of the eastern portion of the city, outright off Bon Air Path. So as I said, they had received a conditional use permit in 2022 on the site and had initially been planning on converting an existing garage to an assembly space for their worship on the property. After some consideration by the applicant and discussions with the city's building official, it was too much or too, it was unlikely to work for the applicant to convert a garage into an assembly space due to the requirements of the building code. The applicant has come back with a site plan proposal and is seeking site plan review to construct a new building on the site in with, that is about 40 by 85 feet or 300, or 3,400 square feet footprint. Staff is recommending some conditions to that approval due to the fact there are some shortfalls in the applicant's plans that could be made up through those conditions recommended. Namely, there's some requirement for some screening or trees planted within a required buffer yard, so the landscaping plan would be required to be updated to include those in order to be in conformance with the city code. There is also some parking located within that buffer yard that will have to be shifted or relocated elsewhere to meet that requirement. So as I said, the site is located along Bon Air Path, just on the south side of Bon Air Path, near the intersection with Bacardi Avenue. Immediately east of the site is Meadows Park, and south of the site is a city water tower and fire station, too. West of the site is a large lot that's currently being used as a single-family residential parcel, and immediately to the north is a non-conforming commercial property just at the intersection with Bacardi Avenue. A little bit more site context, Robert Trail is further west, and to the east is Autumn Path. Bella Vista is northeast of the site with Horseshoe Park in there. So the site itself has a very rural feel, and it is heavily wooded on the southern portion of the site, and you can see the existing home here. This was the garage that would have been converted had that been possible. And then to the east is a park here showing some grass that had been control burned to eliminate non-native invasive species, if you were wondering what the black ashy area is there. A view of the site from the street shows the existing home. The proposed building would be located to the rear of that face, placed in a diagonal orientation. The site itself has many trees, as well as some existing lilac plants along the western boundary, and further back you can see that wooded area on the site. So the site plan proposed by the applicant shows the structure here being placed thusly with some parking to the rear of the site and wrapping around to the right. As I said, there was some parking placed in that 30-foot buffer yard that would have to be shifted or relocated. Some additional plantings would have to be placed along there, although the existing greenery here does provide some screening. Further back, you can see in this image, it is a little bit more open to the adjacent parcel. With regards to the site standards related to setbacks and building heights, the front yard setback, the minimum is 30 feet. The actual new structure will be placed 134 feet back from the Bon Air Path. The side yard setback is typically 10 feet side yard setback with the required buffer yard of 30 feet. The building meets that with the revision as shown here, this portion of the parking does fall 30 feet from that parcel boundary. And the rear yard setback is 10 feet. The, the new structure would be located 319 feet from the rear property line. The maximum building height for a structure like this in the public institutional district would be 40 feet. The applicant's structure is 24 and a half feet tall, and the city code does allow for some additional structural elements to, that would, are allowed to exceed that. In this case, the minaret would be allowed to be up to 65 feet tall or 25 feet taller than the maximum building height. In this case, the top of the minaret is 41 feet 5 inches tall. With regards to parking on the site, the applicant has provided a plan showing a number of parking stalls as well as a proof of parking. The code requires one stall per three seats for assembly uses. Based on the overall size of the building, the building code itself anticipates a maximum capacity of 248 people, and that does not take into regard the different spaces within the building, if it's seats or kitchen area or meeting rooms or anything like that. So just based on the 248 people that could possibly fit in there with a ratio of one per three feet, three seats, 83 parking stalls would be required on the site. The applicant's plan shows 27 stalls, which would equate, equate to 81 seats within the building. The proof of parking shows room for an additional 84 stalls, which is, I think, I don't have it on me, 248 more, 250 or 248 more people could fit in there with the proof of parking. So that is to say, if someone were to come in and purchase this and use it for something different, there is enough room on site to allow for that additional parking if it were needed. Just based on conversations with the applicant and the information that they provided, their actual parking needs are far lower than the 80-some stalls shown in the proof, and therefore staff is recommending approval of the site plan with the parking shown here in the hatched area. After review with the city's building official, the plan shows a widened driveway to 22 feet to allow for emergency apparatus as well as turnaround areas to allow for the maneuvering of those vehicles. The applicant does have some landscaping on site. There's a total of 26 trees provided or planted existing. 53 are required, but the city code only requires two and a half inch wide or caliper inch trees. So just looking at the site itself, you can see many of the trees which will be remaining on the site are well beyond that, and therefore it is anticipated that the site is well in conformance with that minimum planting requirement. Additionally, foundation plantings in the number, in, in the amount of one per 10 feet of building perimeter equate to 25 foundation plantings. The plan shows a total of 41 shrubs on the site. Additional landscaping is provided around the parking areas, which is consistent with the city code. The building elevations provided by the applicant show some vertical elements to break up the, the walls along there, this being the south elevation, kind of the main entrance as people come in and park on the rear of the building. If you were looking at it from the, from the street, you can see those different windows and a dome and other elements there. This would be the eastern elevation, so facing the northeast of the site. This is the west-facing elevation with some additional vertical elements punctuated by the windows there, and then lastly, the southern elevation. The code does call for the use of brick and natural stone on 50% of the site. The applicant's plans do include a stone face block on the foundation areas, and the applicant is proposing to use control joists separating a fiber cement paneling material positioned in a way that mimics a stone block exterior while not actually using brick or natural stone. With regards to this, the intent of the ordinance and the material, the, the specific language in the code says that the, the materials are required in order to prevent urban blight and ensure quality, long-lasting construction that does not detract from adjacent properties and is compatible with those throughout the distance, or district, excuse me. It is staff's finding that the materials proposed by the applicant do meet the intent stated before you there, and an example of how the, the control joints would be used is most clearly depicted kind of in that upper right picture on the left-hand side there with the, with the control joints, creating a brick-like exterior. A couple other notes, the site had, has been served by Well and Septic. A requirement of their CUP approval and of this site plan would be that they tie into the two 8-inch water and sewer lines on the eastern portion of the site, which the applicant is aware of and as indicated would be done as part of this project. Additional conditions staff is recommending with this are to update that landscape plan to include some evergreens along that western portion of the site, as well as reiterate the fact that the driveway and parking areas shall be paved. the fact that the driveway and parking areas shall be paved. Lastly, the city's engineer and building official have reviewed these plans, but as this goes through the building permit process, a formal approval or stamp, so to speak, would be given to that. And so any requirements of the engineer and building official shall be incorporated into plans prior to a building permit being issued. And lastly, a landscape surety in the amount of one hundred and ten percent of the cost of any trees planted on the site to be returned after one year of survival is a requirement as well. So with that, I can take any questions the commission might have. I do know the applicant is present who may be able to better speak to their plans than I am.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions or comments from the commission at this time?
Hi. Are you sure?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sure there are. So nice here. So I was here originally when the original proposal was in place. And if you could just remind me, Anthony, at one point then they were going to convert the garage dwelling. And do you remember or can you tell us how many, how many people that was originally going to hold versus the two forty-eight now with the new proposal?
I couldn't tell you what that exact number was. The building code just kind of has a general maximum capacity and that's what we were going by, simply because the use is not doesn't fall within that direct use like the layout and the worship will not occur in typical auditorium-style seating that could be used to calculate.
How about this, this, the new, the new building is proposed to be, I think you said forty by eighty-five?
Yes, thirty-four hundred square feet.
What about the original garage space? Maybe that will help me kind of put it into perspective of the difference in size.
Well, I can tell you on the site plan, you can see here, the original one was approximately forty-four maybe by twenty, forty-four by twenty. So much smaller and you can see it on the site plan here, this existing garage.
And one other question then, too, like, obviously, this is a residential home that's on the dwelling at this point. Is the lot itself zoned for residential itself or is there something else that it's zoned for on top of that to be able to build this type of larger structure in the backyard?
So houses, places of worship are allowed within the R1 zoning district as a conditional use. So you have to go through the conditional use permit process in order to use that site for that use. The applicant did get that approval, so it's kind of sort quasi-residential, quasi-public institutional. The conditional use permit process is to mitigate any impacts that there would be on incompatible or different uses in close proximity, so basically in a neighborhood.
And I think my last question, the only other concern originally, I think, was possibly people parking in areas they shouldn't and around the block and things like that, but it looks like the parking is going to have enough room for eighty-three required stalls?
Correct, correct. There's, there's significant parking, space for parking through the proof of parking and also staff would just note that there is no parking allowed on Bon Air Path nor on Bacardi Avenue in that in proximity of the subject parcel. The closest parking that could be done off or on-street would be over five hundred feet away to the west, but it's just not likely that that would be the case.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. My first question is kind of the mechanics of our approval here. So they've got a conditional use permit. Are we modifying that original conditional use permit by this action or are we?
We're, we're probably a better way to put it is adding additional conditions that are tied to the construction of this building.
Okay.
The original conditions in their conditional use permit would still apply.
Okay. The plantings and the trees and there's credit essentially given, correct, for existing trees on-site?
Those, those can count towards the minimum requirement.
Do we know how many of those are ash trees?
I do not know off the top of my head how many, but if there are, there will be likely fewer on there for sure.
Okay. My concern is ash trees. It's emerald ash boards all over.
Yes.
Trees are being taken down all the right and left. So the, the proof of parking, what will trigger the applicant to build the proof of parking?
So typically, the proof of parking is, the trigger is if it's the city's discretion for if that needs to be implemented. And so we, we would see parking on the street or hear about it more likely. That would be a trigger, that the city would then work with the applicant and say, you have to start implementing this proof of parking. Secondly, would be if the use were to change into a use that has a higher level of parking requirement. The code specifically says that the proof of parking would have to be implemented or parking would have to be provided for that new use, whatever it would be.
Okay. So if they're using all the paved spots and there's significant parking in the gravel area, will staff consider that in the future? Like, if they're using the gravel area for parking on a routine basis, maybe they should construct that proof of parking?
Right, right, yes. Because that is the requirement in, in properties that are served by municipal sewer and water, that parking areas are paved with bituminous or concrete.
Okay. And finally, it's to be paved with an approved surface. I assume we're talking bituminous or concrete?
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Whitman.
Yes, thank you. Just one question on the fiber cement siding that's being used, and I understand staff, staff, staff's conclusion is that that meets the intent of the ordinance. As I understand it, the ordinance says something like you have to have rock or stone face, but this looks like rock or stone face, I think is what I'm hearing. And so aesthetically, it meets the intent. The only thing I heard and the reason I'm asking the question is, when you read that off, it says long-lasting construction. And I'm just asking if, does that change, having a fiber cement siding versus like a full stone or rock, does that change the long-lastingness of the construction?
I think I would defer to the applicant's architect on that about the specifics of the material. It's something that we've been seeing somewhat regularly, requests by developers to use materials that aren't explicitly allowed, but because our code was written when it was written, you know, you can't use metal paneling. Well, the metal paneling nowadays is not corrugated, you know, or galvanized steel or something like that. So it's more just allowing it to be a little bit more reflective of modern construction techniques. And if one of the, one of the intents or goals is for it to be compatible with other properties throughout the area, allowing this material which is used on homes and things like that would be a little bit more complimentary to those. But yes, I see where you're coming from and I would defer to the architect on the specific materials, long-lasting or durable.
Yeah.
Elements.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have, thank you. I just have questions on what is the color being proposed for the project?
I, the code doesn't really regulate the color, so I would defer to the applicant on what they were thinking for it.
Are the existing structures, the, the home and the garage staying where they are? Are they being demolished?
Yeah, it's staff's understanding that they would be remaining on-site.
Okay. And then any comments from the residential property that is adjacent to the site?
Staff didn't receive any comments or calls regarding this request.
Thank you. Anthony, can you, I just wanted to clarify on the trees, the, the credit that's given for them, is it tree for tree or is it because some of those trees are more established that they're, that they would get more credit for them?
Generally, it would be how we've, with the tree inventory and the tree preservation portion of the city code, it's all calculated on caliper inches.
Okay.
So staff would interpret it as caliper inches.
Okay.
We certainly wouldn't want them to remove a large established tree and then replace it with a two and a half inch tree.
Right, right.
And have it still.
Right, okay. So, so they may not need to plant any trees once you go through the inventory is what could be the outcome, except for the trees that are required to be put in for shielding of the parking?
Right, which are, are different than just kind of the general, you need this many trees based on the size.
Okay, okay. With, with Commissioner Powell's comment about the ash trees not counting.
Certainly.
One other thought when, when there was the conversation about parking that I, that I had, on some other properties, we have done conditions where there can't be off-street parking. So I'm thinking, I feel like, like, the Community of Hope Athletic Center or Hope Field House and then like the North Twenty Brewery, we had conditions in there that, and I get the off-street parking is far away, but that we had conditions where there couldn't be off-street parking done and that would trigger the additional parking. Is that something that we should consider here?
I think that, I mean, certainly you can condition it how you see fit. From an enforcement standpoint, it's very difficult.
Right.
I think if it's a repeated, ongoing issue, it could be a little bit easier to suss out where, you know, where the parking problems are, are coming from. But being that there is, it's clearly no parking on the street and no parking on Bacardi, the two closest areas, it just doesn't seem likely that, that's a long way to walk.
It is, it's a long way to walk. I, I would agree.
And, and I would.
I just don't know if it helps the city and their, if they have to enforce it, if it's a condition that was put in or not, is where I'm going.
Yeah, and you know, we do add a lot of conditions to things that, you know, don't always, it's more of a memorialization of that.
Right.
Understanding or expectation. You know, I would defer to the applicant and see what, how they.
I also feel like this use may not, may not cause that, but if the use should change in the future, that's where, so it's like, I'm not necessarily feeling that, that this use may, but ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, if either it grows to such need or the use should change, that then.
Certainly, certainly. And I think the applicant would probably, without speaking for them, be happy to have a reason to expand their parking.
Right, of course. Commissioner Whitman.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Madam Chair, I, I like that comment a lot and I think it's important to be consistent. If we have imposed conditions on other uses, especially other assembly uses, if that's, if that's, if that's what we've done, then we should be consistent across the board. So it sounds like it's not a big deal, like the, it sounds to me like the applicant is going to be complying with it. Parkings would be a long way away anyway. Perhaps it is difficult to enforce, but if we've imposed those conditions, it seems like we probably should impose those here, too.
Yeah, so with the North Twenty, I think, you know, when they came back here, the, it's a public, at the end of the day, public streets that have, allow parking are public streets that allow parking. And it's tricky to say this, this property can't use the public street or public parking. So with North Twenty, I think that we ended up on that eventually it would be signed no parking, so nobody could park on it. Or it was parking on one side so that some neighbors could park on it, but it, it, it goes, we see it on other neighborhoods down by the Clover and a neighbor saying, well, I see employees parking on my street. It's a public street, you don't own it. I think when it, when it becomes an issue is excessive and repeated use. And a lot of times, those issues can be resolved through a meaningful conversation with the cause of those issues. So that's kind of where I would like to leave it as staff, just because it's difficult for us to enforce. But again, you know, the applicant is here, they, they can hear your concerns and certainly could speak to them better than I could.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for staff at this time? Okay. Seeing that, we will open up this item for public hearing this evening. Anyone that would like to speak to this item may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. And we would invite forward the applicant if they would like to speak. I know there are a couple of questions for the architect on the color and longevity of the building materials and also on the plan for the existing home and existing buildings on the site.
Mohamed Shazad, 14250, Aylesbury Court, Rosemont, Minnesota. One of the member of Al Medina, not the, the applicant, but one of the member. Oh, thank you for taking this this evening. Architect is here, but addressing the earlier question on the parking, I know, the parking has been issues in some of the church worship kind of uses in the other cities, with such a small community here. Moved to Rosemont twenty-twelve, were twenty-five some members. Twelve year later, we're still under forty. So with such a large four-acre lot and plenty of opportunity to expand as the staff recommends us, we really don't see a problem. If a condition has to be added, I mean, really, we do not have a concern on that because there is no possible way to park half a mile away and walk anywhere here, but at the end of the day, I don't think that's a concern for us. The, on the colors part, yes, it's some modern materials. I think it's as durable, if, if not more than the existing one, but that was our reason to go. Of course, it's a lot more cost-effective for such a small community and the main thing was that it's, it's really nice looking after the lack of baritone. I can definitely address if there's any other questions.
But I think there was a question on the color of, that you're planning for the building. We didn't see any elevations that had the colors on it.
Sure. We have not selected the colors. We're still working with the contractors on the materials and on the, but we, we are definitely open, share with the city staff and if there's any concern, we'll certainly, I mean, be open to change. But I understand the ordinance required the earth stone kind of colors, not some flashy red or something, and of course, we'll, we'll definitely don't want anything like that. So we'll, we'll definitely keep them to earth stone, then if then they won't even be acceptable, we'll be willing to, to switch. So color, it doesn't matter, it'll be the lighter earth stone kind of colors. But again, haven't picked up one yet.
Okay. Thank you. And then there was a question on the existing buildings or existing home on the site. Is that going to stay there?
At this time, correct, that's the, at this time, we are not planning to remove any structures, but down the road, we really do not know. But at this time, with this building, when we construct, hopefully starting soon. So with that, we are not removing any of the existing structure. I know there was a small, not a garage, but it's a chicken coop kind of, that's very small, smallest of the small structure and probably will remove that one, but all the other structure that this time going to stay as is.
Okay, thank you. And if you could just hang out, are there any other questions from the commission for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I didn't, just to clarify, because I asked that question about the fiber cement siding, I understand it looks good, you know, I believe you. Was there any concern at all or is anyone aware of any concern that fiber cement siding somehow has like a lesser lifespan or something than actual rock and stone?
Well, that aspect hasn't been discussed at least, so I'll be very open, but definitely our intention, working with our architect and the potential contractors were on the two fronts. One's looks nice, one is it's durable and it's a cost-effective as compared to real rocks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
There is anyone else in the audience that would like to come to the podium at this time and address this item? You may do so. Seeing that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Powell to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any other comments or questions from the commission before we move forward?
No. Madam Chair, I, I appreciate the comments about the consistency with the, the parking, but I also appreciate that public roads are public roads and unless it's posted no parking, people are allowed to park there. I think practicality will take, take over. I think practicality will take over here, and they've got plenty of proof of parking, so I'm not recommending an alteration to the conditions that are presented in the staff report. I would make a motion to approve the site plan of the proposed place of worship for Al Medina Association, subject to the six conditions noted in the staff report.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our public hearing section of this evening's meeting, and we will move forward to new business. Thank you.
There is no new business, Madam Chair.
Perfect. We will move on to the discussion section of this evening's meeting.
Yes, staff would just like to remind the commission that there will be a joint work session with the city council on October 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00, hopefully from 5:00 to 6:30, because the council has to kind of turn over the room for their council meeting at 7:00 o'clock to discuss the zoning code update and kind of the progress that we've made and illicit feedback from the commission. So that's just a reminder there.
And if we could just.
Yeah.
I know Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Rivera are not able to make it that evening. Is there anyone else that is not able to make it on October 3rd?
Can you repeat the times?
5:00 until 6:00, technically 7:00, but probably 6:30.
Okay. And if anyone else is, where something comes up and you cannot make it, please let Alicia know.
Staff would also just like to welcome Alicia. I know you, some of you had a chance to say hello to her ahead of the meeting. We're very excited to have her on. She's been getting her feet underneath her and getting going and up to speed on all the great things we have happening here in Rosemount, so we're very excited.
Welcome, Alicia. I will just do a quick review of our next meetings. So our next meeting is October, our next regular meeting in, outside of the joint meeting that Anthony just spoke to, is October 24th, then November 28th, and then December 18th. And I put an asterisk next to that one because it is a Monday.
Yep.
And it is not our normal Tuesday, fourth of Tuesday of the month meeting, and also the city website calendar, I know was.
It actually has it on both the 18th and the 26th.
Oh, it's got both 18th and 26th. Oh, I didn't look.
So I think whoever put it on the 18th, forgot to delete it from the 26th.
Delete it from the 26th.
Do not come on the 26th.
Not come on the 26th. We will meet on the 18th. And if you are unable to attend any of those upcoming meetings, please let Alicia know right away, and I know some of you may have already told her, I think Commissioner Powell, you can't come on the 18th typically?
I believe that's correct. I think that's a meeting conflict for me.
Okay. So can I just ask that you send Alicia an email so she doesn't have to remember?
I may also ask to see if that other meeting might move before I reach out.
Okay.
Be sure to let you know.
Perfect. Sounds good. I know we've got a lot of stuff coming up in the next few months, and so we want to make sure we certainly have a quorum for meetings. And then I did want to just mention, this did come up in my conversation with Anthony ahead of this, so I don't want to have it reflect on any of our great conversation we had here tonight. But, you know, if we have questions on the topics, especially in the next couple of months when we have a lot coming through, that if you've got specific questions, it's very helpful to staff to send those in ahead of time, even if you don't read the packet until Monday night and you're sending it in Monday night, and they get it Tuesday morning, obviously the earlier they get the question, the better. But that way, if it requires research or it requires some, for them to look something specific up, they have some time. It does not mean we can't ask questions that come up during the meeting, because during, we're going to have questions that as we're talking about it, we think of, so that it does not mean to dissuade us from doing that. It just means that if you have questions while you're reading the packet, to send them in, allowing them to get us research and info ahead of the meeting so that they can have answers for us. Also, if you've got concerns about an item, feel free to share that with them as well and what your concerns are, so that they might be able to help address those as well at the time that we get to the meeting, so that they, we can continue to move things forward and not have to continue. I know in past, we've had items where we didn't have information, so we'd have to continue it to future meetings and such. So just a small reminder and request of that. Anthony, anything you'd add?
Who should we include on those emails?
Just typically, if it's a specific item, whatever staff person wrote the report, that's always helpful, because we would be the ones presenting that item. That, yeah, it's not a requirement, it's just always easier. We really want to be able to give you guys as good of information as we can and give you guys enough information that you can make good, informed decisions is what we're trying to do.
And I think, Julia and Anthony, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think you could send it to the person who wrote the report, but you could also copy Adam and the other, the other individual in case one of you should be out sick or something and some things, we don't always know who's, if something changes, so, yeah, I think.
Makes sense.
But you should send your questions to just them and not the rest of the commission. So just a reminder, we don't want to start having any.
Open meeting laws?
Right. We don't want to have any violations of discussing items against open meeting laws. So please direct any questions or comments to them, and you can also, you know, call them and talk through it as well.
Yes. And I think it should be acknowledged, but tell me if I'm wrong with this understanding, but when we email you, that's a public record, subject to being produced in a practice.
Certainly, certainly.
Yep. Any of the emails?
You know, keep that in mind.
Any other discussion items for this evening?
I have nothing else.
Okay. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.